I think we will go ahead and get started. I want to welcome everyone to the New Berlin School Board Candidate Voter Forum. This is an opportunity for you to hear virtually from the candidates running for the New Berlin School Board. My name is Olivia Kelly and I am the President-elect of the Rotary Club of New Berlin. I will be your moderator this evening. The forum will last one hour and is structured as follows. Each candidate will be given three minutes to provide opening remarks. I will then ask a series of questions and each candidate will be given the opportunity to respond to that question for two minutes. At the end, each candidate will be given the opportunity for a three-minute closing remark. We have received several questions for the candidates submitted by the citizens of New Berlin. Should you have a question that you would like to submit, we ask that you use the Q&amp;A button on your Zoom application to do so, as I will be monitoring. We will do our best to get to all questions, but there are no guarantees. This forum is being recorded. The Rotary Club will be posting the video of the forum on YouTube. You'll be able to find the link to the video on our website, rotaryclubofnewberlin.org, and on our social media. And with that, I would like to introduce the candidates. We have Scott Gensh, Jeffrey Kurth, Ray Schaffert, and Ron Seidel. Mr. Gensh, if you could please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to provide your opening remarks.
Okay. I would like to thank the Rotary Club of New Berlin for hosting this event tonight. My name is Scott Yonch. I'm a 27-year resident of New Berlin. I'm a trained engineer and a local business owner specializing in communications, marketing, and technology. I'm married to Amy, who is a second-grade teacher in a neighboring school district. I'm the father of a recent graduate from Eisenhower High School and a current sophomore at Ike and a proud marching band parent and leader. I've built sets and taken photos for Ike's theater program and I volunteered at many events and extracurricular activities. I've cheered on our students at basketball, soccer, and football games at both Ike and West. And I believe that I'm the only candidate that has danced on the stage at West PAC. I have been active in the school district for more than 10 years, advocating for our students, their teachers, and our schools. As a result of that history, I know staff at every school of our district. I believe I have attended every annual meeting since 2011, as well as several committee meetings, including three just this year. After many years of participation, as a member of the public, I'm looking to increase my involvement by representing the community and serving on the school board. My primary concern is to improve communication between the school board and the community. Increased understanding of the district's strengths and opportunities for growth, combined with more awareness of the community's feedback about issues such as diversity, financial stability, safety, and others, will result in a stronger school district, which will benefit our students and our community. Effective communication builds trust and draws upon the resources of the entire community. Rather than suppress public participation, I want to increase it. Rather than ignore public input, I want to increase it. When community members see themselves as partners in this process, it allows us to be better than we would be alone. I want to invest in our schools so that we can ensure a strong future for our school district that will provide an excellent education to our students for many years to come. I believe in getting the most value possible for our money and that responsible financial management benefits us all. I also believe in making decisions based on facts without allowing assumptions or bias to prevent us from having productive discussions about important issues. I approach decisions by performing research using what teachers call a growth mindset, which means that I'm always seeking more understanding and knowledge through hard work, good strategies, and input from others. This is going to be essential for the school board as we face challenges in the future. I'm asking for your support and your vote on or before April 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kurth, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes to provide your opening remarks.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Kurth. I've been on the board for nine years. I'm the father of two girls who went to Ronald Reagan and now go to school at Eisenhower. I grew up in a military family, moving around a great deal until high school. It's part of the reason why my family worked so hard to make the difference in this amazing community. My unique and diverse background in business, building management in the arts, has brought me a unique perspective and pragmatism to many discussions and decisions the board has made during my tenure. I have shown an ability to balance the best interests of our students with our responsibility to best utilize the hard-earned money given to us by our taxpayers. As a dad, I want the best education and opportunities we can offer to my kids and yours. As a taxpayer and an entrepreneur, I want to make sure that our administration has the tools they need to succeed and to use them as efficiently as possible. This position requires a willingness to look deeply into the information that we have available while making critically important decisions, combining that with the best guess projections and forecasts with the accountability and the creativity to adjust along the way. Our district is like a complicated vehicle that doesn't stop moving, and I want to keep that momentum going to serve you and our children and the best education we can provide. I love serving our community and utilizing my knowledge and creativity to do the best job I can for our students and our taxpayers. I'm very proud of what we have accomplished so far, and you would honor me with your vote again. Thank you, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffert, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ray Schaffert, and along with my wife Allison, we're parents of three kids in the New Berlin School District, two at Ronald Reagan and one at Ike. In addition to being their dad, I'm also an involved parent who's invested in our community. I'm an active board member of the New Berlin Soccer Club. I'm a volunteer soccer coach and I'm a volunteer basketball coach as well. And a special shout-out to our second-grade, fifth graders who came in second in the state, or second in the state, fifth graders. I've learned a lot in my years of service, and I care about all the kids in New Berlin. I hope to bring my commitment and dedication to them to the New Berlin School Board. As a business professional for over 20 years in the private sector, I have a wealth of experience. I hope to bring this vast experience to the board and use it as another way to serve our community. As young parents, my wife and I came to New Berlin over a dozen years ago because of the schools. When our youngest was just over two and my wife was about to give birth to our twins, our research led us to decide that New Berlin was where we wanted our kids to grow up and go to school. We've been incredibly blessed with the teachers that our kids have had, from their education in the classroom to lifetime memories we have, such as our twins singing along in the cafeteria as kindergartners, to our daughter dressed up as Jane Goodall during a Living Wax Museum, to the delight and horror of recorders playing Mary Had a Little Lamb inside the Ronald Reagan Gym. We were happy in our decision coming here, but like other parents, as our kids got older, we started hearing more and more whispers about the state of our district. What do you mean they might close an elementary school and consolidate the two high schools into one? Where are all of those displaced elementary kids going to go? And what will the impact on the extracurriculars be? The more I began to peel back the onion, the more I realized that not everything was as great as it seemed or was portrayed. And that's when I got activated to do more. I attended the listening sessions regarding Orchard Lane closing and the high school consolidation. I was blown away by the involvement of parents in the community. As I began attending school board meetings and participating in numerous online forums, trying to educate myself on where we were and where, more importantly, how we got there, I felt like I needed to jump in and do more for our schools. I know we share a common belief that our schools can be an amazing places for our kids to thrive and grow. Unfortunately, too often, we also share the same frustrations with a district that seems to be stuck in a reactive loop. Policies and decisions jerk from one direction to the next without a well-thought-out strategy. Our successes seem to be in spite of our board's decisions and not because of them. We can do better, but to do that, we need to start now by heading in a better direction with our board. We need a series of comprehensive plans to address a variety of issues in our district. With careful planning, we can prepare for where we're going and be ready when we get there. We need more open communication between school leaders and parents, and I'll be an empathetic ally for parents who want to give input, ask questions, or give suggestions for the betterment of our schools. Doing these things will result in our board becoming a true partnership for our kids and a true partnership with our community. Let's start planning for tomorrow by working together today. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Seidel, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
All right. First of all, thank you to Rotary for sponsoring this forum. I'm Ron Seidel. I served as third district alderman in New Berlin from 2007 to 2019. During that time, I served on multiple boards and commissions, as well as there was a city-school ad hoc committee which brought fiber to the schools and the city. I was the chair of the finance committee for six years with strong fiscal policies. We accomplished a triple-A bond rating with the city through the work of the common council and the mayor's office. I'm a current member of the City of New Berlin Board of Public Works. Two years ago, there was a referendum on the ballot. I didn't support the referendum because I believe the district could find cost savings within their operating budget through fiscal responsible decision-making. I wanted to be part of the solution, so I volunteered on the community task force. As I predicted, the district successfully balanced the budget and is moving forward with strategic plan for long-range facility needs and paying down debt without closing schools or cutting programs. I also served on the common council again for 12 years and have a successful record of fiscal responsibility and creative solutions to complex issues. I wanted to continue to give back to the community and the students by bringing my experience, my fiscal responsibility, and proven record to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move into our question and response period. The first question, Mr. Kurth, you will start. The question is, what do you currently see as the biggest challenge facing the district and how would you address it? You have two minutes for your response.
The biggest challenges so far, it's mainly been this year with the COVID-19. We've been really successful in regards to our approach to keeping things open. So the whole idea, our mantra is, keep safe to stay open, is what we want to do. We were able to put together a really robust virtual program that allowed people who didn't feel as comfortable to stay home. We did seek public input before we made any of the decisions, and we had an overwhelming 70% answer back that they wanted to go back to schools. And when the time came in September, we actually had 78% that actually came back full-time and about 20% that stayed in virtual. And it's been very, very successful. The nice thing would be to have everybody come back to schools. We'd like to have that as a complete option. We are also looking at a permanent virtual option, if it's possible, but there's a lot more going on. There's a lot more mechanisms in the works for a full virtual option for moving into the future. But one of the nice things that we were able to do is, because we were forward-thinking in the past about getting individual devices to every one of our students, we're a one-to-one device per student, that made the transition actually easy. It allowed us to keep everything open full-time, but it would be nice to be able to get to full-time for everybody to be back in school and have everything back to normal.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Schaffert, you have two minutes.
Thanks. It's a number one issue that I've had, that I have, and I'd say, most of the parents I've spoken to, I've been speaking to a lot of them walking in the streets and passing out my door hangers over the last month and a half, is communication or lack thereof of communication transparency from the board with the community. That's actually one of the main things that kind of activated me a couple of years ago. I'm not only a dad, but I'm involved. I went to two of the three listening sessions when they were talking about consolidation and closing Orchard Lane. Just the lack of communication that was shared with people and also the fact that there were so many questions that seemed obvious that the board and the administration should have saw coming, it really left a lot of people in the room frustrated and angry, myself included. I always say, if I had a nickel for every time I was told, you know, we'll get back to you on that, on a very question that people should have saw coming, I've had a lot of money right now. As far as some specific issues, again, you know, the consolidation and communicating that well to people, and also last year, a good example was the busing. Not only were we trying to work through what was going to happen and parents were all on edge and anxious, as far as what was going to happen with when school was going to open, is it going to be in-person, virtual, or whatever, then all of a sudden it got thrown on everyone, hey, we want to change the schedule. It was proposed to change, to move the time up to 30 minutes for certain sections of the city. It wasn't discussed with parents or with educators beforehand. And again, when you communicate, you help build trust. And I think on top of everything else last summer, that definitely was one of the main things that pushed me to running, quite honestly. You know, the fact that nobody was asked and even certain members of the board, including our incumbent, who just kind of didn't really care, didn't seem to worry about, said, it's just 15 minutes, the world's not going to end. Who cares? Just that type of attitude, I think, and the lack of communication, things that really have a lot of parents upset and have really lost trust in where we're going with this board. So if I'm elected, I'm going to make sure that communication is one of my top priorities and that we're transparent and open with people. If you look at our website, whenever there's a board meeting, it's nearly impossible to figure out what the topics will be. So moving forward, that's what I want to help change.
Thank you. Mr. Seidel, you have two minutes.
By far, I believe the most important issue this year was opening schools five days a week, and I was the only candidate not on the board to strongly advocate for this. Area districts that chose virtual and hybrid options are seeing catastrophic results that will take significant time and resources to undo. I would also like to focus on continuing to balance the budget and look for cost savings without closing schools or cutting programs. As you may know, as I stated, I served on the City of New Berlin Finance Committee for nine years and was the chairperson for six. I have a successful record of fiscal responsibility and finding creative solutions. You know, speaking to communication, we look at how much communication we do receive from the district, and I think by far it kind of outweighs what we don't receive from the district. So the busing issue, I understand that we need to balance with parents and communicate that with them strongly and take a look at what's not best for the taxpayers, but also what's best for the parents and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gensh, you have two minutes.
Okay. I would echo the concern that Ray had about communication. It's an issue that I've been bringing up to the school board for many years. If you look back in the Privilege of the Floor speeches that I've given, a lot of them have to do with communication dating all the way back to 2011. And along with the volume of communication, I think it's most important to look at the effectiveness of that communication. What is being delivered? How is it being delivered? And are the people that you're trying to deliver it to getting it in the best way possible? We saw examples of that recently where the community tried to communicate with the school board about an issue that they felt was very important. Over 1,200 people submitted a petition. It took until the end of, this was in June, it took until the end of February before there was any official response. And even when that response came, the response was not, we hear you, this is what we're going to do. It was something very different. And that was repeated again last night. And I just feel as though a school board needs to do a much better job of listening to the public and then communicating with them in such a way that involves the people in the decisions of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. We're going to move on to our second question, and Mr. Schaffert, you will be starting this question. How do you plan to ensure that the school district of New Berlin has equitable classroom and school environments in which every student sees their culture, history, experience, and hopes authentically and positively portrayed? And I should also mention to the candidates at any point, if you need me to repeat the question, please ask me to.
Yeah, could you repeat that one more time? Sorry, I want to make sure I get a couple of them.
Certainly. How do you plan to ensure that the school district of New Berlin has equitable classroom and school environments in which every student sees their culture, history, experience, and hopes authentically and positively portrayed? And Mr. Schaffert, you have your two minutes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Well, that is, that question's touching on one of the hot buttons right now within our community, which is diversity. Like a lot of people, over the last couple of months, I was embarrassed and saddened by the negative, all the negative attention, not just locally, but regionally and nationally, that has been brought here to our school district regarding diversity, regarding how kids feel in school, and how, quite honestly, more than 1,000 students and alumni have sent a letter to the board stating that, you know, they don't feel safe. And part of the reason they don't feel safe is because there is a lack of understanding. There's a lack of empathy across our schools right now. So what I think we ought to do in order to make sure that environment is positive, make sure that people feel safe more than anything, we can't ignore that. We can't ignore it's a problem, wish it goes away. We need to listen. Again, kind of the communication. More than 1,000 people sent in a letter to the school, and it took them several months just to get back with a small, just a minor response. So I think we've been doing some good things from the school district standpoint in order to make sure that people see themselves in a positive light in the environment. A couple of school board meetings ago, we mentioned how we changed the books in order to have more diverse names so that people feel more inclusive, and also it gives positive light to different cultures and people. But at the end of the day, we need to keep moving forward and we need to be better. But as the school board, what our job is, we push the board, we push the board and provide them a guide. What I think we should look at is follow the example that Elm Brook Schools recently did. They also got a letter very similar to what we had here. Within a couple of weeks, the administration put together a task force, made it public, and got in experts in the field of diversity to study that and help provide guidance. The board aren't experts in this, but the board can help push the administration of the school district forward.
Thank you. Mr. Seidel, you have two minutes.
I watched the school board meeting from last night with, careful here. As a parent of two biracial students who attend New Berlin West, this issue is very personal for me and my family. I think it's important to make sure that curriculum used in the classrooms not only meets the state's standards, but is also diverse and inclusive of all people and perspectives. The administration regularly reviews this process in updating curriculum resources, as we found out last night. This is a great place to start, to ensure that this is the case. And the superintendent and administration team indicated that this is one of the criteria they use when evaluating material before they purchase them. We need to make sure that students are successful in our schools and how staff and administration handles instances of inappropriate behavior from students, especially when race is a factor in that behavior. We've dealt with that personally. Administration took, we teach our children to have a voice, and when it's brought to the administration, how they handled it, and brought to the faculty, how they handled it was important in earning our trust of the students. We can't control the choices children make at school, but we can teach them to be kind and respectful through the existing Step Two program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gensh, you have your two minutes.
Okay. I think we should do everything that we can to make all students and everyone who works and visits our schools to feel welcome and safe. There should be an environment of mutual respect of each individual's dignity and human rights present in every aspect of our school district. And by doing that, we'll be able to solve so many of the problems that we're currently facing with diversity. You know, in addition to seeing multicultural names in a math problem or something like that, my wife has often remarked that her students really enjoy seeing books and reading books that have characters that look like them. And not only does it help the students that have cultures that match those students or the characters in those books, it helps the students that are not of those cultures to be more aware, to be more tolerant, to be just generally more informed. And that's something that is part of the culture of the school district. The teachers can do quite a bit in the classrooms, but the district can do quite a bit in the environments of the buildings. Anytime that there's a situation where there is some sort of cultural or diverse problem or something like that, it needs to be dealt with quickly, just like we've done in the past years with bullying. And I think with our district being so predominantly white, that it's definitely in our children's best interest to be more aware of cultures other than ours.
Thank you. Mr. Kurth, you have two minutes.
Excellent. Thank you. The first thing I want to address is, I feel that the district itself does a fantastic job with looking at new curriculum, because I feel massively important to involve everybody's culture and to the school district. I think the diversity that we were discussing, as far as the math curriculum and using more ethnic names, is absolutely outstanding. I think it's a great way to introduce everyone to the cultures of other races. What I do disagree with in the current environment is the divisiveness and the segregation of races itself. My point that I made about a month ago is that the race should be taken out of it, because we shouldn't be dividing and segregating people by race. I think all in all, that's probably the worst thing that you can possibly do. I'm not saying that race doesn't exist or racism doesn't exist. I'm just saying that as you push race as itself and in the format of the white supremacy, that is another form of racism. We need to take the race out of it. We need to enjoy and we need to promote everybody's culture. We need to produce American culture. And everybody's race is part of every single history, American history, world history. Everybody has a history. It's all a part of it. The only race that matters is the human race. We need to make that a very, very much an important attitude and a structure in which we live in, in the town of New Berlin. As far as the diversity of the population of the schools, we really don't have much say in the school district for that, because we don't have really a say of who moves into the district. But what we can do is, we can have an equal opportunity for everybody that walks into our school district, and we do that on a regular basis. Everybody has an equal opportunity. The outcomes aren't always the same, but we can only promise equal opportunity, not equal outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to question three. Mr. Seidel, you will start this question. The school board voted five to two to extend Superintendent Garza's contract until June of 2025. Would you, which way would you have voted on that and why? You have two minutes.
First of all, I felt the way that Superintendent Garza handled the opening of our schools' five-day-a-week instruction with an option of virtual, giving families a choice, was done very well. However, I am not on the board, and I don't have the same information that they are privileged to, so I can't make a decision on that until I'm elected to the school board. I've agreed with the way he's handled, like I said, opening up our schools. I've disagreed with certain things, but I really can't make a decision on that until I have the same information that the board are privileged to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gensh, you are up next. You have two minutes.
Okay. I think it's very difficult to complain about the outcome of going back for in-person classes this year. So I definitely congratulate the superintendent, but also the entire administration, all the staff, the students, and the families that were all involved in making that possible. However, I was somewhat surprised that the board voted to extend Mr. Garza's contract for so many years. Now, obviously, like Ron said, that there may be information that we're not privileged to, but I think that there's plenty of opportunities there to examine what our options are, and perhaps such a long extension of a contract was unwarranted.
Thank you. Mr. Kurth, you have two minutes.
Please repeat the question for me.
Sure. The school board voted five to two to extend Superintendent Garza's contract until June of 2025. If you had voted, would you have voted which way and why?
Sure. I actually voted for it. I think the superintendent has done an outstanding job, just not just in regards with the COVID-19 response, but it was mentioned before about our records, the decisions that we It was mentioned before about our records that the decisions that we made, we just get lucky. Well, we've been getting lucky for over 10 years as far as our ratings in the state. We're constantly exceeds expectations. We constantly move and improve our district. We have probably the most robust. One-to-one device system for our kids. Our college and career readiness has been outstanding and that has grown sufficiently. We have partnerships. With UWM, WCTC, nursing programs. All of these have been spearheaded and moved forward by Mr. Garza. He has been absolutely outstanding when it came to the COVID-19 decisions and where we needed to go. He put together a plan to make, we're, we're one of the only districts in southeastern Wisconsin to be open five days a week. Not only that, but all of our kids have an opportunity to do more. He did an outstanding job. He's been an unbelievable leader. The best way I can describe it is if we were a football team, we've been going to the Super Bowl every single year. And if we're constantly moving forward and doing what we're supposed to do, the district's hitting it out of the park. That you, you can't, you can't say that it doesn't make a difference because. We're one of the best, we're in the top 1% of the districts in the entire state and that's consistent. Our high schools are always in the top 10%, the top 10 by US News and World Report. So as we move forward, we always have things to learn. We always have things to grow. We're always tweaking to try to make ourselves better. But we have been the standard bearer for what we should have. We have a 99% graduation rate. We're absolutely outstanding. And anybody who has a leadership that's willing to do that, I'm willing to give an extension to all day.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffert, you have two minutes.
Thanks. Um, yeah, my response would be as far as voting yes or no to, to extend Mr. Garza. Similar, I, I'm not, as a member who's not on the board, I'm not privy to all of the information that they have. And everything that goes into making that decision. I will say I was surprised at the news of, I was surprised at the news of the length. Of the extension as well as the timing. Traditionally, it's been done. It, it hasn't been done so close to an election. It seemed like it got pulled ahead for whatever reason, but again, I'm not on the board, so I wasn't privy to that. I do think Mr. Garza deserves tremendous credit, credit and the administration does. For how the, the response for COVID-19. Quite frankly, I think it was Mr. Garza and the administration that, that bailed out the school board and their decision last summer. To move forward with the, with the recommended COVID plan. The plan that was voted on by the board on July 20th was to move forward with five days in person and five days virtual. But it did not include mandatory masking. You know, I'm glad that Mr. Garza and the administration felt the same way that I did, which is when it came to opening schools this year. There's your must haves and your want tos. I think everybody, every parent in this district wanted the schools to be open. Either five days, short term, but they wanted them to be open in some way, shape or form for in-person. But, and I wanted that too. But the must have is that the children need to be safe, the teachers need to be safe. And the only way that that was going to happen was through mandatory masking. What the board voted on, on July 20th was to move forward with five days in person without any masking. Putting everybody, you know, possibly getting sick and not making a safe environment. So. I'm thrilled more than anything with this decision that allowed my kids to be at school in person and have a lifetime of memories. I have friends out of the state. That have not been able to do such things. I have friends in state and what they've missed out on is tremendous. So I'm very thankful for what, for what he was able to do this year.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we will move to question four. Mr. Gensh, you will start this question. We have four elementary schools, two middle schools and two high schools. Do you support the continuation of this structure? Should consolidation be considered again? And will you advocate for a different model? Why or why not?
Well, that's a good question because that issue exactly came up in September of 2019. After the referendum in April 2019 failed. The school board started looking for ways to save money. And one of the ideas that it came up with was to. Close Orchard Lane School. Close New Berlin Eisenhower, uh, close New Berlin West Middle School and close New Berlin Eisenhower High School. Disrupting thousands of students. My, my children were at Elmwood when children from Glen Park. Were relocated both to Glen, to Elmwood and to. Orchard Lane. And I can tell you that those children were impacted the entire time that they were at Elmwood. They did not feel as though they were. True students of Elmwood because they started out at a different school. And in September of 2019, I organized, I, I worked with a group of concerned parents. And we analyzed the situation, the information that we were getting from the school district. We compiled the information, we published the information. And we composed a letter. Pointing out the issues that we had with the facts and the logic that was being used. Nearly 500 people signed that letter and we presented it on September 23rd, 2019. Later on in that meeting, the school board. Decided to completely remove the idea of consolidation and closing schools from consideration. And I feel like that's a very important thing for our district. We should not be closing schools. We should not be consolidating schools. We should be strengthening them.
Thank you. Mr. Kirth. You are up. You have two minutes.
Excellent. Thank you. Currently, there is no discussion whatsoever about consolidating the schools. When the discussion did come up regarding the, the high school, middle schools. I have always been in favor of the high school, middle school program and the way that we have it set, set up. That is something that I've always enjoyed. I think it's a fantastic benefit. To have the kids in the same school for six years in a row, not only for, for friends, but for continuity of their education. When we were looking at Orchard Lane at the time, what the whole idea behind my, my point of view regarding closing schools or Orchard Lane. Or any of those where we needed to keep options on the table because of the financial situation the district was in. If people are unfamiliar, about 15, 16 years ago, they decided to build Ronald Reagan and renovate West and they did it within the budget. And subsequently, over the course of the next 15 years, we saw a decline in actual enrollment into the district because people were just having less kids. So as time went on, there was a huge budget constraint because we obviously didn't have as much money coming into the district, but the bill stayed the same. So when money was tight, we were looking at nearly $2 million a year that we was, we were going to have to find in a budget gap. So when it came up, we were trying to be very innovative. So we did refinancing. We have, we refinanced debt as much as we often can. We were consolidating most people's, but almost all the budgets. We were looking at, we were looking at every single possible way that we can cut to where we could be. The, the idea when it came up regarding Orchard Lane was to make a promise to never do that. And I can't say that we're never going to open another school. I can't say we're going to close the school. It's a, it's a fluid situation and I don't want to be the person who's going to make a promise. Of something that, that if we need to keep the option on the table, to me, it's about. Keeping options open, more so than it is to actually going in and making that prudent decision of, of closing something. It's not something I want to do and there is no option of closing that is going on currently and our. Financial situation now, there is no need for it.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffert, you have your two minutes.
Um, yeah. So one of my, one of my main priorities that I'm campaigning on and talking to parents. In the Orchard Lane District, in, in all the districts, but especially in Orchard Lane parents, they remember the talk of the consolidation, the closure and the possible consolidation. It hit home with a lot of people. I've specifically moved here to New Berlin so that I could experience the two high school system. I didn't want to go to a place, a city that has a gigantic school with 2,000 students. And as I point out in my opening comments, the one thing that kind of activated me to get more involved and just not look, start looking beyond the test scores. It was the talk about closing the elementary school and the consolidation. One of my main priorities is that we maintain the current school structure. It's an incredibly valuable asset. And the continued talk about, you know, will we close Orchard Lane? Will we or won't we? You know, that again, to the whole point of communication and trust with parents. There's a lot of parents that have lost trust. A lot of educators lost trust with the school district and got tired of hearing about it because they want to know they have jobs. They ought to know that the school system is going to. Be what they thought it was when they moved in. I too was at that meeting in September of 2019. I spoke at that meeting. On the record and, and gave my opinion that I was completely against the consolidation at the time and still am. I also signed the petition that, that went around that was signed by about 500 people. And then at that meeting, when they came about and they said, we weren't going to move, when it was, I believe Mitch Helmer. Said that we need to move forward and stop talking about this, the consolidation. There are only two board members at the time that voted against that. They wanted to continue in leaving consolidation open for debate and that's one, the incumbent who's up for election here today.
Thank you. Mr. Seidel, you have your two minutes.
It's a great question. When you start looking at closing or consolidations, schools, it really comes down to fiscal management. The district has had balanced budgets and surplus funds recently. Still important for the board and administration to stay proactive. To prevent slipping back into a deficit. This is why I support continuing to look for cost-saving opportunities within our operating budget. And ensuring we have a conservative, conservative budgeting process. This budgeting process should prioritize funding our excellent teachers and student programs while not consolidating or closing schools. There's no crystal ball. There, there really isn't. There's no talk of being, of closing Orchard Lane or consolidating the high school and middle schools. Right now, but through conservative fiscal policies. This can easily be avoided in, in the future along with strong. Strong budgets and budget projections. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to question five. Mr. Kirth, you will start this question. Would accepting more kids through open enrollment possibly help with creating a more diverse population?
That I couldn't tell you because I'm not part of the process. It is a complete lottery. And we're not privy to who is going to be. Applying for the open enrollment. That really, that really has, I have really no say in who's going to enroll. The lottery is completely random as well. So it, to me, it really doesn't make a difference. To me, who is brought into the district? We have a fantastic product that we offer. The whole idea behind the open enrollment. To me, it's not about opening for anybody particular. It's literally the, the premise behind it is if we have some seats available. Can we offer great education for anybody that comes in and anybody that comes in will get a great education.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffert, you have your two minutes.
Yeah, as far as if it could, could accepting more kids, bringing more diverse population, I mean, it depends. We have no control over. Over the type of people that are going to apply. I mean, if you look at just the word diversity. It will be, it would be diverse because it would be students from outside of New Berlin, but as far as. You know, race, color, creed, that sort of thing, we have no control over that. However, it increases the chances of that happening because you're going to have somebody from a different city or a different area. And regardless of their sex, color, creed, they're going to have different life experiences possibly. Which is also one of the main reasons I've been for open enrollment and we should continue to look to expand it. We were one of the only cities in the whole region for over a decade that didn't offer open enrollment while we were, while we were really hurting for cash. And we had open seats and we continue to have open seats. I'm very grateful that we reopened open enrollment last year. That vote also was five to two and a person who's continuously voted against open enrollment and again, voted to expand open enrollment is the incumbent who's here with us tonight. I think we should continue to look to expand that and take advantage of the revenue that that brings in. And bringing in people from outside, students from outside of New Berlin, it doesn't hurt us. I, there's the concern over the, the, that some board members have, have given over the, the type of student that comes in. You know, if it's a troubled youth that has been expelled and had, had those, that type of thing happen. Those people, those kids aren't part of the program anyway. But yes, I think it could add to the diversity. It all depends on where they come from, but definitely we need to continue with open enrollment. I'm glad we did too. Because it also brought in $7,500 per student. It's something we need to continue to look to do.
Thank you. Mr. Seidel, your two minutes.
Um, again, just like Mr. Kirth and Mr. Schaffert said. We don't have control over. Who comes into our district via open enrollment or not. One of the things we need to keep in mind with open enrollment is that. We would only receive 50% of the funding to educate the students that come into our community from outside. If we, if we have the open seats, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with open enrollment. But I, I just want to caution. That you don't get full, full tax dollars and full funding for students that open enroll. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gensh, your two minutes.
All right. I, I think by its very nature, open enrollment increases diversity. Anytime you bring in students that aren't from your own community. You're, you're bringing in diversity of all different kinds and different perspectives. And learning about different perspectives and different experiences is essential to the educational process. It's something that we want our students to be looking at. And since we don't have a say in who comes into open enrollment. You know, there's no way we can put our thumb on that scale. However. Like the other said, it, it can't hurt. These parents and these families are motivated because they've applied. They've been accepted. They have to provide their own transportation in most cases. And we can't complain about low enrollment. But then also say that we don't want open enrollment. So if we can do it so that we don't risk incurring additional costs and other negative impacts. It's a win-win situation for everybody. And those experiences that the children have, both. That are coming in from open enrollment situations and the kids that are in their classrooms. Are going to be better off for it. So I'm definitely in favor of it and I look forward to discussing it again in the coming year because it is a yearly decision as far as how many seats we have.
Great. Thank you. I think we have time for one last question before we get to your closing remarks. Mr. Schaffert, you will start this question. What would guide your decision to remove the mask mandate for our students? So they can begin, so they can begin a return to normalcy?
Sorry, hit, hit on mute there. Yeah, that's one word, science. Um, I, I would follow the science and what the, the experts say as far as what we would do for next year. I think we're moving in the right direction from a vaccination standpoint. And hopefully we'll have increased herd immunity by, towards the end of summer. As far as right now, it's too early right now. But by the middle, by early to midsummer, I would like to think there's going to be more guidance nationwide. Regionally also from the state here for the Waukesha Health Department, which I know that's who gives us our guidance. But I would follow that, that would be the number one determining factor for myself. It, again, it comes down to the must haves and want tos. You know, you follow the science. You don't just put kids in an unsafe position. Some members of the board were very anti-mask heading into the vote last year, not following the science, seeing where things were already leading. That would have, we wouldn't have even had our school year. We would have had to shut down, start, stop. The only reason we've had school active the entire year without stopping is because of the mask mandate. If the situation gets worse, we don't know where it's going to be in July, but if it does get worse, we'll see what the science says and I'll, I would vote to follow whatever that, that gives us the proper direction. But as far as wanting to have, get, get rid of them, I'd love to get rid of the mask for next year, but it's going to come down to where things are at from a science standpoint.
Thank you. Mr. Seidel.
All right. Okay. As far as getting rid of the mask mandate and giving this, the students to begin to return to normalcy, I think that, I don't think there's anybody. That is sitting, that wants our students, staff, even ourselves in masks. There, there's different things involved. I believe that the Superintendent Garza stated that he's following. Waukesha County Health Department as well as the CDC guidelines. With. With, as far as the masks goal, I, again, I don't think anybody's happy with it. But I, I think that it, the way it's currently working with following. The Waukesha County Health Department. Is probably the best for that, that particular. That's, that's the answer really. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gensh, your two minutes.
Last July, when the school board decided to. Last July, when the school board decided to resume in-person education in the fall, I made a statement on the record that said that I would love for in-person education in the fall. And the proposal on the table was for only teachers to have masks. And my statement was is that the medical guidance at the time was telling us that masks were important for teachers and for students. And I said that we cannot go back to in-person classes without masks for both teachers and students. Fortunately, a week later, even though the plan was approved without it, a week later, the plan was amended to include it. And I think that is the single most important reason why we've had a successful school year. So I think the masks are definitely a good idea. That said, the reason that I felt that way was because of the medical advice at the time. When my children get sick or when I get sick, I don't look to YouTube or memes for information. I follow medical advice. I call my doctor and say, well, what do I need to do? What do I need to be looking for? What do I need to be worried about? So I follow medical advice. So I think we need to do that in the same situation here. Waukesha County Health Department provides guidance, as does the CDC, and we need to follow that guidance.
Thank you. Mr. Kirth.
Yeah, actually, I think we've done a pretty good job with it. As far as the mask mandate is concerned, well, we have been following the guidelines of Waukesha County Health Department. Mr. Garza has had a, I call it a dynamic plan because the information has been changing weekly. At the time when this was starting to come out, starting in March, April, May, June, we were getting new information every single day. As people were learning what COVID was, how it affects people and who's being affected by it, it was all changing. Every presentation and every vote that we took was based on the idea that this is a dynamic, fluid decision. And as we move forward, we're going to be following the science. We're going to be working with the health departments to stay safe, to stay open. The whole goal was to get our kids back in school, which is what all of the New Berlinites wanted us to do. And not all, sorry, 70%. The ones that wanted to stay home, we made sure the virtual option was there as well. We have concern for all our kids as well as all our staff and teachers and everybody of every age. So as we move forward, depending on what the Waukesha Health Department decides is really kind of where we're going to move to because it's always a fluid, a dynamic thing. If COVID decides it's going to adapt and to do something else, more than likely we'll have to make a change then too. So the whole idea is to keep everybody safe. The nice thing with the, with the virtual option and the in-school option that we have now is if anybody is having symptoms, they can quarantine and still be able to get a great education by doing it virtually until they're cleared to come back. And the same thing for teachers. If teachers aren't feeling well, they can stay home and still teach virtually as well. The options that we've had have been outstanding. But I think all four of us are in agreement in, in following the science and listening to what Waukesha County has to say, as well as the CDC. We have been outstanding in following the science so everybody stays safe. And as far as masks, they're uncomfortable. They're kind of a pain in the butt. Most people don't like them. But to stay safe, to stay open, that's really what we're all about.
Thank you. And thank you all for your responses to the questions. We are now going to move into our closing remarks. Each candidate will be given three minutes. I want to thank you all for participating tonight. Mr. Seidel, you will go first with your closing remarks. So if you could please unmute yourself, you will have three minutes.
All right. Again, thank you to the Rotary for sponsoring this forum. It, it's, it's been enlightening along with the questions that are coming from our community. So I thank the community as well for participating in this. Again, during my time on the common council, I, I've served on multiple boards and commissions and learned how to work with, within the systems and within government and, and trying to move things ahead faster. I was the chairman of the finance committee meeting for six years. We wrote strong fiscal policies that, that, that helped us get, get a triple A bond rating. And again, prioritizing infrastructure. I've been a member of the Board of Public Works for nine, well, now 11 years. So when, when you start looking at addressing our facility needs, I, I know how to, I know how to prioritize work and to look at those things. I, I hope that I've earned your vote on April 6th and I, and I look forward to serving on the, on the school board in New Berlin. So thank you so much again. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffert, you have your three minutes.
I want to thank the Rotary Club for inviting me to this event as well as all the other three candidates here who participate and all the members of the community who took time to submit questions and tune in. For the last 20 years, I've been a successful business leader. I've experienced firsthand the turnaround that can happen when new leaders begin working with instead of against other stakeholders. I've seen what happens when an organization moves from reactive to proactive, ensuring everyone is moving toward common goals. New leaders can help to create teamwork, empower others and build accountability. If I'm given the opportunity to serve on the board, I'll work from day one to help this district communicate more effectively and offer transparent decision-making. I'll work to ensure we treat all stakeholders as partners. Like most young parents, my wife and I wanted to settle down and establish our home in a city with great schools. Our research showed test scores and overall positive grade in New Berlin. We love that our district, that our district had to offer, especially having two highly rated high schools instead of one gigantic school with thousands of students. I fought to keep our existing school structure in the past and I'll continue to do so in the future. This position is not about ideology or political litmus test. It's a nonpartisan position for a reason. I'm not interested in the labels of liberal values or conservative values. I care so much about New Berlin values, the value of hard work. I'll show up as I have before. I'll join committees and I'll work my heart out for these kids in our community. The New Berlin values of careful study and deliberate planning. I'll ask the questions and voice the concerns from around the community so we can ensure we take care of our debt, forge true partnerships and become a transparent body for this future. I've been out there for years doing the work and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves to help plan for the future. That's why I have people in all parts of the political spectrum supporting me. It's about New Berlin values. It's about our kids and our community. I've shared my ideas by personally going door to door, by talking to as many of our neighbors as I can through mailers that I've paid for and sent out. I've shared my thoughts, experiences and expertise on Facebook via phone and email. I've shared pictures, videos and more. I'll keep doing that and so that people in New Berlin can learn more about me. I've been an open book. And while I'm honored that so many have listened to me as a brand new candidate throughout this campaign, I want to assure everyone that it will be me who is listening to you over the next three years. I'll be an empathetic ally for parents and other community members. I'll insist on open communication, transparent decision-making. I'll try to change and improve the culture of our school district to help attract and retain the best teachers. I'll look for pathways to ensure that all our students feel safe and welcome in our schools. I'll explore opportunities for alternative revenue sources like considering open enrollment and other ideas we can discover. I'll build relationships with other board members to find common ground on good policies. I'll work to keep our current school structure firmly in place and I'll always protect our extracurriculars from basketball to band, from football to forensics. I'm on board. My focus will be planning for tomorrow by working together today. We can do this together and I think we will. Please join me, Ray Schaffert, on this journey for our kids and our community. And please remember to vote by April 6th. Thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kirth, your closing remarks. Mr. Kirth, you're muted. I'm, I'm grateful that we only had that once during this forum.
Well, I want to thank everybody in the Rotary Club for hosting this thing today. It's been fantastic. I'm pretty proud of the run that I've had. I've been on board for nine years and we have done some outstanding things. We are constantly preparing. We're constantly looking forward to moving things into the future. The college and career readiness has been pretty much the pinnacle and we have been contacted by people nationwide about how we run our college and career readiness. We also have spent over $25 million in the renovations of all the different schools. They've all had different projects that have been done over the last 10 years with, to the tune of $25 million. We also have set together a four-year plan for other structures as we move forward as a four-year plan for larger main projects for, as far as roofs and, and pavement projects. So as we move forward and we look, look ahead, I'm actually just going to read the, the final portion of this. So in each election I've run, I've been faced with challenges who fixate on one or two issues on the basis of their candidacy. They're really giving credit to the hardworking members of our administration with noteworthy exception to our teachers. I want to take this opportunity to remind you, in case no one else does this evening, that we continuously strive for accountability, transparency and the ability to do, to do and be better than we did the day before. We are a community that people move to because schools are doing such a great job. And that's true. Everybody that I've talked to that moved here say they're moving here from the schools. Mr. Schaffert said the same thing. That's the reason why I moved here as well. We do have many success stories that we can celebrate while we commit to keep striving for more. As a board member, I join our board and our administration and teachers in trying to keep doing a better job, being better while staying within our budget. I will continue to keep my promise to our students that I will fight to give them the best education I can. I will continue to keep my promise to our taxpayers that I will hold our administrators accountable for how your money is used. Thank you for the Rotary Club for hosting this event this evening and that the voters can get a better look at the candidates. Thank you for being invested parent and taxpayer and taking time to watch this forum. I hope I can count on your vote either by absentee ballot or, or on April 6th. God bless. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gensh, you have your three minute closing remarks, please.
All right. Thank you again to the Rotary Club of New Berlin for hosting this event. I would also like to thank all the viewers of this event tonight. And I encourage everyone to continue to be involved in the school district even after the election. I appreciate having this additional opportunity to reach the voters of the school district of New Berlin, just as I valued the conversations that I've had with fellow citizens that I've met at school board meetings, at sporting events and while going out and meeting people during this campaign. I think I've shown that I'm an independent candidate that I don't hide behind labels and that I try to think very independently in what's best for everything involved. I've heard your concerns about our school district. When it comes to issues such as diversity, finances, investing in our schools and communications, I promise that I will be a voice of reason, not a voice of division. I will seek information with a growth mindset and not assume that I have all the answers. I will make decisions based on facts and I will not let personal feelings get in the way of serving our students and our community. If we do our jobs right, our names will seldom be mentioned and that will allow our students and our staff to shine as examples of what we do and who we are. I feel that I am highly qualified to serve on the school board. I have valuable experience with our education system at every level. I am familiar with the experiences of a classroom teacher and I've built positive relationships with members of the school board, staff and members of the public, which will allow me to serve this community and its students well. I hope that I have provided you with the information that you seek to make a decision about who will help lead this school district into the future. I would be honored to serve on the school board. I look forward to working together with the school board members to ensure our future. I ask for your vote on or before April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all the candidates. Thank you to those who tuned in to listen to the forum. This concludes the New Berlin School District School Board Candidate Voter Forum. Thank you all.